Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, September 20th regular meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The city council is conducting this meeting from the council chamber and staff are complying with the current regulations of the California Department of Public Health and Cal OSHA for safe indoor meetings. As a courtesy and technology permitting, members of the public may continue to provide live, remote oral public comment via the city Zoom video conferencing platform. However, the city cannot guarantee that the public's access to teleconferencing technology will be uninterrupted and technical difficulties may occur from time to time. Members of the public desiring to provide comments at the meeting are always encouraged to attend the meeting in person, as many of you have. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting or their first teleconference meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment period process. For each agenda item, there'll be an opportunity for public comment on the item. Thus, if you desire to speak to an item on the agenda this evening, please hold your comments until the council considers that item. Additionally, we have a section on the agenda entitled "Public Communications", which is for items that are not on the agenda. Any comments during public communications should not relate to an item that is on the agenda this evening. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the open session portion of the meeting if necessary. When I open the public comment period, if you're here in person, please fill out a yellow speaker card at the back of the room and you can approach the lectern. If you're joining us by Zoom, you would use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. We ask that you do that when the item is called, if you'd like to speak on that item and you're joining us by Zoom, please raise your hand at that time when I call for public comment. Please keep in mind that this is a city business meeting. The city council has adopted rules of decorum to ensure that meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively and that all members of the public have a full, fair, and equal opportunity to be heard. All remarks should be addressed to the city council. Please do not use profanity during your comments. Given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various issues during our meetings and consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. We also accept written comments. Written comments submitted and received up to two hours before the meeting have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be separately read into the record. To provide a live, remote, public comment, join the Zoom video conferencing meeting. The meeting ID and password are, the webinar ID is 860-2108-5445 and the password is 951630. Should you choose to not provide comments but would still like to view the meeting, you may do so in a variety of ways. YouTube Live, visit the city's YouTube channel. Cable broadcast, we're on many cable broadcast channels. Comcast Channel 28, Rossmore Channel 26, Wave Channel 1028, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You can also livestream us online on the city's website. At this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Darling?
Here.
Councilmember Haskew?
Here.
Councilmember Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Silva?
Here.
And Mayor Francois?
Here.
We are all present. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from William Rogers, who's the president and CEO of Goodwill San Francisco. And I would invite Mr. Rogers up to the podium to make his presentation and welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Francois, for the invitation and I'm really very happy to be here. Thanks for the ability to, the opportunity to speak today. So I had the great opportunity of getting here a little bit early and contributing a little bit to the economy here. And I'm going to do some more so when I leave after this meeting. But tonight, I want to tell you a little bit about Goodwill. And, but I want to start by telling you a little bit about why I have chosen to work at Goodwill. I can work a number of different places and I've chosen Goodwill for a particular reason. I, when I, I grew up in South Central Los Angeles and I left home at about 16 years old. And I left home because my father realized that I was gay and that wasn't going to be acceptable in my household. And so I wound up being on the streets for about six months while I waited to get into a runaway shelter. And once I got into the shelter, I spent about the next four years really struggling trying to figure out what am I going to do? Who am I, how am I going to make a life for myself? And during that time, I was a car washer. I was a, I worked at an ice cream shop. I worked at all sorts of different places in order to try to figure it out. And during that four years that I was as a 16-year-old and then through 20, really trying to figure out how to, how to make it work, a lot of horrible things had happened. And then when I was 20 years old, I found myself sitting in the parking lot at Santa Monica College and really dreading what I was about to do. And I walked across the campus, it was this beautiful sunny day, and I'm watching all of these people on the quad and they're talking and laughing and studying. And I was going to turn in my withdrawal form for the fourth time. So I had, I tried community college four times and I dropped out all four times. So it wasn't until the fifth time that somehow it clicked. And all of a sudden, the first semester, I had three As and a B. And then I started the UC Club for people who wanted to transfer to UC campuses. And then I got pushed to run for student body president and won and wound up being president of the student body for the following year. I transferred to UC Berkeley with a 3.9, graduated from UC Berkeley with honors, and wound up getting a master's degree. I tell that story because I think, and if we could go to the next slide, oh, I have control here, all right. I've been thinking a lot about the question of what is the value of an opportunity? And so I want to talk a little bit tonight about the value of an opportunity. For me, community college, the value of the opportunity was that it was a forgiving opportunity, right? I mean, had it been, you get one shot and that's it, then I might not have ever gone to college. And the fact that I had a counselor there who every single time I went to say, you know what, I've got to drop out, and I felt terrible about it. He would say, you know what, William, you're just not ready yet. You've got a lot going on in your life. You just, just promise me you will not give up. So he was holding hope for me and at a time when I couldn't hold hope for myself. I actually think I worked for the city of Berkeley for 17 years and I think that's a lot of what cities do is we're holding hope for folks, particularly some of our most vulnerable populations, at times when they can't. And we're providing opportunities that wind up being forgiving so that folks can continue to persevere. And again, you know, for me, community college was a great opportunity the first four times, but it was at the wrong time, right? And the fifth time, it was the right opportunity at the right time. And so sometimes it takes all of us a minute to get it. I like to joke that I needed a second chance four times. So one of the reasons that I, I work at Goodwill is because Goodwill is really about creating second chances. We, the main reason that we exist and the only reason that we exist is to help people with barriers to employment. So people, people with barriers to employment to get employment, develop a work history and then, so that they can move into higher wage employment. I should tell you a little bit about how Goodwill is constructed or structured. We have, it is, there are 155 different Goodwills across the United States and they're all separate 501(c)(3) organizations. And so it used to be that Goodwill of San Francisco and the East Bay were together and in 1938, they separated. And, and I would be happy to say that about eight months ago, we re-merged. And so we are now Goodwill of the San Francisco Bay. And we cover San Francisco, San Mateo, Marin, and then Alameda, Contra Costa, and Solano Counties. So what Goodwill does is we give people a second chance and we give items a second life. So we have both a people purpose and a planet purpose. And so we've been serving the Bay Area since 1916. Again, six Bay Area counties. We have donation sites, stores. We employ right now about 1,000 people. About 80% of those folks have barriers to employment and we'll get into what those barriers are in a moment. Last year, we served about 3,000 people. We placed about 1,100 people in jobs with 270 different employer partners. And the other thing that I think is really important is we, last year, just the San Francisco side, if you include, no, actually, that's not true. This is for the total. We diverted about 50 million pounds from the landfills last year and an additional 3 million pounds of e-waste. And so when you're donating, if you donate a shirt, what happens is that shirt becomes the supply for a business whose only purpose is to employ people who would otherwise be difficult to employ. And at the same time, you're helping with the reuse recycle, to reuse and recycle items and diverting them from the landfill. So of the people who work for us, the 1,000 folks, about 80% have barriers to employment. And those folks, 95% are low or no income. About 30% are justice involved. About 20, about another 30% are limited English proficiency and about 16% are either unhoused or are housing insecure. And the folks who we work with are people who generation, who have, have lived through generational poverty, sometimes situational poverty, who are incarcerated, again, who are unhoused, who have disabilities, who've struggled with substance abuse disorders, transitional age youth, or people who have just fallen on hard times. So we're dealing, so the folks who we employ are folks who typically fall within these categories. And what we do is, our whole purpose is to create life-changing opportunities through training and the power of work. So we have a whole, we have three pillars, really skills building and industry certifications. We've got individualized career services and then paid employment with benefits. And the important thing there is a lot of the folks who come to us don't necessarily have a work history. They, if they were, if you were incarcerated for the last 10 years, you don't have a work history, right? Nobody wants to hire you. So where do you go? What do you do? So we talk about recidivism rates, but the fact of the matter is, if you get out of prison and nobody will give you a job and nobody will give you a place to live, what are you supposed to do? So then you got to go back. Oftentimes, people will go back and do what they were doing before that caused them to be incarcerated. So we have a very robust program. San Francisco is very robust. We're working on bringing it up in the East Bay. The East Bay was a little behind and so we're working on that now, but we've made a lot of, a lot of good progress so far. And so what folks are learning is they're learning anything from transportation to warehouse and distribution, to e-commerce. We have a very robust online business. We have aftermarket, we have computer demanufacturing and refurbishing. So lots of different ways that people are learning and things that they can learn and skills that they can develop in order to move into better jobs, either up in Goodwill or outside of Goodwill so that they can, they can move into family, you know, employment that will help them support themselves and their families. And the, you know, it's not just us saying this. So we have 10 years of California EDD data that says that the San Francisco Career Center's success for us, clients move from a 36% employment rate to a 68% employment rate after a Goodwill San Francisco intervention. And that is 10 years of data and those numbers stayed consistent over that 10-year period. The other thing that I think is really important and that we're starting to look into is housing and employment. So housing and employment are inextricably linked. And what we do in the Bay Area is we say, well, you know what, people are unhoused, so we're going to build housing. And my question then is, and then what? I mean, people need food, they need benefits, they need all sorts of things, right? So you build housing and then what? I would say for most people, and there may be some people who are an exception in this room, maybe not, but most people, their employment and their housing are linked. It determines whether you have housing, how much of it you have, where it is. So we're, we're really believe that, that separating housing and doing this in a silo doesn't make any sense. And so we're starting to work, we're starting a comprehensive program to work with housing providers. We're also talking about actually building some housing ourselves to allow people to be employed and housed. And so it's not a six-month thing. It would be more of a three-to-five-year thing because again, it takes a minute for you to, to stabilize your life. And the bottom line is we're all messy. People are messy, right? It takes a minute. So it doesn't just happen so easily. So one of the things that we were hoping that you could help us with is just creating awareness, helping us advance our mission, supporting public-private partnerships, introducing us to folks. And, and what would be helpful about that is, you know, we are, again, East Bay, I think the East Bay Goodwill was a little understated and we actually really want to be involved in the community. We don't want to come in and be like, we're here. We actually want to partner with folks who already exist to see where we can add value. And then, then the other thing is just sort of how can we help? The cities are complicated. Again, I worked for the city of Berkeley for 17 years. This is a much nicer council chambers than we ever, and a lot calmer, actually. But what opportunities might we create together and, and how can we be of help? So we believe very strongly that people can change their lives. People do change their lives when given an opportunity. And so really interested in having a brief discussion about opportunities and maybe talking offline at some point about what opportunities might exist for us to partner. So that is it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rogers, for being here and letting us know about all the good work Goodwill of the Bay Area is doing. I'll turn to my colleagues and see if they have any questions for you. Councilmember Darling?
Just as more point of information, we do have a homeless task force here in town where the county, the city, and a number of our nonprofit partners get together. It's got its own website and we, I'd be happy, I'm taking your email down and I'll make sure that you get on the distribution list. Because that's a good place to, we have the Trinity Center here in town, which is one of our great nonprofit partners. And they are a day center that works at getting the unhoused folks here in town into services and into all those things that people need, so.
That would be terrific. And if we could actually offer employment to some of the folks who are unhoused or ready, that would be great. Thank you so much.
I will definitely pass your name on to those who do these things.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Haskew?
So what kinds of items that are the most saleable, that you're most interested? Is there, is there a standard for things that we should look at when we make donations of goods?
Ideally, there are things that are gently used that can be resold and reused. Because sometimes what people do is they'll bring things that can't be resold or reused and that obviously then just means that we have to figure out a way to discard it and it, it's a cost, but it's also not good for the environment. So gently used items are preferable. I think that people sometimes worry that if we, if they, if they donate something really nice, that they're not, that it's not, they're not going to get the value for it. The truth is because we have an online business where we're teaching folks all about listing, photography, and online business, we actually wind up, it's a much broader audience and we wind up getting, those high-value items are really also very useful and very important. We earn about 80% of what we need to operate, which is very, very unusual for a nonprofit. And we just need to raise the other 20%. So those gently used items are good. We can't take things like, we can't take beds, we can't take helmets because they, there might have been, been an accident or baby furniture. But most things we can take and ideally, they're gently used. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Wilk?
I don't have a question, I just want to make a comment. And thank you very much, without people like you being able to help the community and these kind of things, it just doesn't get done. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Well, I can say the same to you.
I too want to echo the compliments and the praise. Obviously, I was struck by your comment that you were a person that needed a second chance four times. And, and so often, I think there's stigma for people needing a second chance and there shouldn't be. That we should be willing to, to give a hand out, reach a hand out, to give a hand up to folks. And I appreciate the work that you're doing. I also want to give a plug. You do have a store here in Walnut Creek.
On North Main Street? Yes, we do.
So obviously, we'd welcome, I'm sure you would welcome donations of gently used items there?
Absolutely. We would love donations of gently used items. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Darling pointed out, I think there are some synergies there with the Trinity Center, with the homeless task force. We have a community service day coming up on October?
Eight.
On the eighth. So if any of your employees are able, willing that day, we'd, we'd love to see out in the community with us and get to know you better and really appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much for having me. Thank you.
Thank you. So next on our agenda is a presentation on, for the Youth Leadership Commission. We have new, a new youth leadership commissioners and we're excited about. have new, a new youth leadership commissioners, and we're excited about meeting them, and I would invite the youth representatives to make the presentation.
Okay. Hello, can everyone hear me? Perfect. Hello, everyone. My name is Propdi, and today, the new youth commission for the 2022 to 2023 term, along with some special guests, will be introducing themselves. So starting off with who we are and a little bit of background, the purpose of the Youth Leadership Commission is to engage the future leaders of Walnut Creek by encouraging youth to take an active leadership role in the community. Commissioners interact with and learn about Walnut Creek local government, complete a policy or service project, and provide a youth perspective on issues within the community to city council. That is a picture of the youth commission from last year, and we have a ton of new faces on the youth commission this year that we're so excited to introduce to you all. With that being said, a few of our commissioners are gonna give you a brief rundown of our projects from the previous term. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Rebecca Joseph, and I will be presenting about the Seat at the Table Initiative. So as Propdi was saying, the youth commission takes on three subprojects to help further youth involvement in our local government. And over the past two years, we've been working on our Seat at the Table Initiative. For those of you who don't know, this initiative essentially aims to get youth more involved in our local government. We have a youth preferential voting seat on three of the five city commissions. We presented this proposal to council back in August and got the green light for a trial period. And just two weeks ago, we conducted interviews, and now we have Angie on, they're right behind me, Angie on Transportation, we have Carlina on Prose, and Skye on Arts. We just saw Angie at the transportation meeting last week, and she did an amazing job. We're all really excited for what the Seat at the Table Initiative will bring this year.
Hello, council. Last year, the commission started the Street Stories Project with the goal of allowing locals to share their stories about our wonderful city. Our project is still in the works, but we are excited to launch the website, as well as other ways and means of communication for people to share their stories with our commission.
Wait, what's your name?
Justine. I'm gonna introduce myself later.
Hello. My name is Jolene Chu, and I'm gonna talk about our third project, which was recruitment for the Chiefs Community Advisory Board, or CAB. This was part of a bigger project we did, vaguely titled, community events, where we hosted a pre-voter registration drive, but we also did CAB recruitment. So previously, we've had two members of the youth commission personally serve on the Chiefs of, Chiefs Community Advisory Board. But we want to extend it out to members of the community, because our member was not only graduating, but we wanted to get more youth involvement in the city. So we put together a form for an application, interview process, and we selected one member of the community, Nathan Dunn, who's not with us today, but, and he gives us weekly, monthly updates whenever they have a meeting, and yeah. So next, we're gonna get into meeting the youth commissioners, returning and new. First is me. My name is Jolene, again. I'm in 12th grade, it says 11th grade on there, but I go to Northgate High School. And this is my fourth year on the youth commission. A little bit in my introduction, I talked about why I want to be the youth commissioner and why I think it's so important. And when I originally started this position, when I was a freshman, I wanted to get my voice into city politics. But then, from three years of learning and serving, I realized it's not just about me, it's not even just about the other 14 people on this commission, it's about every youth in Walnut Creek, and that's what's really important. And on my last year on the youth commission, I really want to drive that home and engage more youth.
I'm now gonna introduce myself. Hi, I'm Justine Simons. I am a senior at Los Lomas, and it's my second year on the commission. I learned so much my first year about teamwork and leadership, and I cannot wait to learn more this year and see what we can come up with as a new commission. Every year has a little bit of a different vibe, so I can't wait to see what projects we continue working on and new ones we will come up with.
Hello again. My name's Propdi Prudon. I'm a senior at Northgate High School and also on the commission. This is my fourth year on the commission, and I'm so excited for this year. This past year, I served as vice chair, and I had the time of my life. This year, I'm most excited to see our policy project progress as it's on its trial period and just see how that keeps going. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Arjun Krishnan, but I'll be introducing Richard O'Donnell, who can be with us here today. Having been a resident of Walnut Creek for his entire life, Richard is excited to give back to his city by completing Street Stories, a project he created to provide students like him with an educational opportunity to learn about local history through the lens of street names. He's in 12th grade and attends college preparatory. Hi, I'm Arjun Krishnan. Like I mentioned, I use he/him pronouns, and I'm a junior at Campbelllendo High School. I'm really looking forward to working with tons of cool new people to help build a better Walnut Creek. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Missay Otong. I am a 10th grader, and this is my first year on the commission, and I attend Los Lomas High School. And as a youth commissioner, I'm looking forward to meeting other commissioners and looking to how we can better the Walnut Creek community.
Hi, my name is Erin Zhang. I'm a freshman at Hed Royce in Oakland, and I'm really excited to have this opportunity to serve on the commission and to make some meaningful changes in my community. I'm also looking forward to learning more about collaboration and some of the nuts and bolts of a governing body.
Hi, my name is Kiera Lund. I will be also representing Annika, who could not be here with us today. She is in 12th grade at Hed Royce, and she's excited to be on the commission this year to work on new community projects and learn more about local government. She can't wait to work with the other youth commissioners of Walnut Creek to help improve our community. My name is Kiera Lund, and I am super excited to be on this commission again this year. I'm looking forward to the new projects and opportunities to make a positive impact on our wonderful community here in Walnut Creek. I am in 10th grade, and I go to Northgate High School.
Hi, my name is Isha. I'm a senior at Moda Vista, and I'm really excited for my second year on the commission to continue our Street Stories project and also have a lot of fun team bondings with the new team.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for giving us this time today. My name is Ella Copper. I'm a junior at Northgate, and this is my second year on the commission. This year, I'm excited to continue some of our projects, like Street Stories, and really just see them take on a new life.
Hi, my name is Riley Petrako. I am a senior at Los Lomas High School, and I'm really excited to be, this is my second year on the commission, and I'm very excited to be back, because last year, I was in the community events group, and I just had a really great time. I felt like I saw a lot more of the city than I had before, even though I've lived here all my life, and I just hope that I can connect with more people. Yeah, nice to see you guys.
Hi, I'm Gath Corshid, and I am a junior at Los Lomas High School, and this is my first year on the commission, and I'm excited to learn more about politics in my city and meet more of these wonderful people.
Hello again. My name is Rebecca Joseph. I'm a high school senior at Los Lomas, and I'm really excited to see the policy project grow, as well as youth commission bonding events. I joined the youth commission back in my sophomore year of high school, so when COVID was really happening, and most of our meetings were online, I believe the council meetings were online as well. So I'm really excited to do more in-person events.
And Rebecca's also a member of our DEI task force.
Hi, everyone. I'm Abigail Stouffer. I am a senior at Crondolet High School. This is my fourth and sadly, last year on the commission, and I am super excited to continue serving my community and opening opportunities for youth in the city. And now we will introduce our new Seat at the Table commissioners.
Hello, my name is Angie Yao, and I am a freshman at Northgate. And I guess a couple of things about me is that my hobbies include crocheting, baking, and drawing, and I like to bike around Walnut Creek, and I look forward to serving on the Transportation Commission and just being able to improve Walnut Creek.
Hi, my name is Skylum Mel, and I am newly appointed on the Arts Commission. I am a 10th grader at Los Lomas, and I am excited to join this commission, because I want to share my ideas, be a voice for my peers, and improve the art in Walnut Creek.
Hello, my name is Carlina Meyer. I am a sophomore at Crondolet High School, where I am also a student athlete. I play softball and rugby, and am also involved in Model United Nations. I am incredibly excited for this opportunity and look forward to learning more about the inner workings of city politics and to create positive growth and change in Walnut Creek. Thank you so much for your time.
Don't go anywhere. I think we'd like a photo at some point, and I just wanted to thank, on behalf of the council, thank all of you for stepping up to serve your community. I, it's so nice to meet all of you. I appreciate you doing this, so that we could put the face with the name, and we look forward, we also look forward to getting to know you better over the, over the next year. And I'm particularly interested in learning more about the Street Stories program, and whenever that goes live or on YouTube, let us know about that. I'll be watching. And why don't we go ahead and, would you like to take a picture with the new youth commissioners, the council? We'll meet in front of the dais here.
Just right in the front. Yes, for sure.
Fluff up the hair.
Yeah.
It's quite, it's quite a crew.
You gotta be a lot tighter than that, I'll tell you. I did a lot of people there. Man.
I might have to go.
It's good.
Did you do that?
Yeah, you should come forward.
Get a little bit better, just horrible.
Now, you're ready.
Did you turn the projector off?
Okay.
The projector's going off, so there we go, thank you.
And smiles.
Okay, now we want to just start with the eight commissioners.
One, two, three.
And maybe the council.
Okay.
Very.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
I wasn't really liking, I think I was right.
Ah, there you go, that's good. I was a transportation commissioner. So that's, I did that for eight years, and then I ran for city council. So I'll see you in eight years.
and how much they're giving back to our community. Thank you. We'll move on now to our, next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Move, oh, I guess.
Now we'll go to the public, any member of the public wish to comment on, an item on the consent calendar? If you're here in person, please come to the lectern. If you're joining us by Zoom, now would be the time to raise your hand or press star nine if you're connected by audio only, to make a comment on the consent calendar.
Oh, we do have a hand raised on Zoom.
Okay.
Wait, they went away, hold on. Looks like their hand went down.
Okay.
Mayor, I move to approve consent calendar items 2A through 2F.
I will second with the note that the motion includes the minor change to the minutes, which is item 2A.
Sounds good. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Darling.
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew.
Aye.
Mayor Francois.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next on the agenda is public communications. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for comments on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the state Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to comments made or questions posed. Consistent with section 9.5 of the City Council handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated at this time for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda, if necessary, will be provided at the end of the meeting. I see we have one person lining up. Thank you. If you're joining us by Zoom and would like to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda, please raise your hand or press star nine if you're connected by audio only, and we'll, we'll hear from you after we hear from the folks in the chamber. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Francois, and members of the council. My name is Renee Zeimer, and many of you know me as a former employee of the city of Walnut Creek. I retired from the city. Today, though, I am speaking on behalf of the Not Above the Law Coalition, of which I am a member. The coalition is made up of more than 150 national, state, and local organizations, mostly nonpartisan, including Common Cause, Common Defense, the Republican Accountability Project, Citizens for Responsibility and Ethics in Washington, and so forth. On this 10th anniversary of the National Voter Registration Day, I am asking for your support for a resolution committing to free and fair elections and the peaceful transfer of power. The resolution is intended to serve as an accountability measure, a tool to debunk disinformation, and an opportunity to reassure the public that with few exceptions, local election officials are committed to conducting safe, reliable, and fair elections. Similarly, election results and the peaceful transfer of power are accepted widely with confidence and humility. A small group of Contra Costa elected leaders and election integrity advocates have been working together on a draft resolution that I shared with you today. It's based on a democracy resolutions template and modified for relevance here in Contra Costa County. Because this is time-sensitive, I would appreciate if the council would consider the resolution as soon as possible, certainly ahead of the midterm election. And tonight, I ask for your support and guidance in moving this resolution forward. Thank you very much.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Thank you, Renee. Has this been presented and adopted to any other city in Contra Costa?
It's moving forward in several. We just are beginning to roll it out, but the city of Pinole has already agendized it. I believe it, it is on their consent calendar for October 18th. Contra Costa County, today I spoke at the, at the supervisors' meeting, and Chair Mitchoff has asked that I forward the draft resolution, also with the intent, she said, you know, after looking it over, if there's no problem with it, then she'd like to move it forward as early as October 4th. We had a positive reception from El Cerrito, San Pablo, Hercules. I'm, I'm in the process of reaching out as our other members of our, our group, so we're, we're hoping that. of our, our group, so we're, we're hoping that all cities, as well as the county, will embrace this. It's no ordinary time, it's an important time for us to come together and, and send a message loud and clear that we are committed to save free and fair elections.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Do we have any other speakers who'd like to address the council here in the chamber? I'm not seeing any, so we'll go ahead and turn to Zoom.
First speaker is Pete Bennett.
Okay, thumbs up. You can hear me, right? Okay. My name is Pete Bennett. It's been a long journey, everybody. I think you know my story by now. Just to start off, a little bit of a message about who I am. I run a blog about police corruption. One of them's called CNETScandal.com. The other one is called PGEWitness.com, and another one's called Bay Area Homeless. Behind me is a nice place that somebody gave me sort of free and a good deal. I'm gonna lose it in about a week. I still haven't received a single police report for almost 20 years' worth of incidents. I'm hoping that something will change. Now, you have received those emails from me, I hope, about the stalking. That stalker that has been following me forever accidentally took a screenshot of his phone, or her phone, and it turns out they're a Lyft driver. So you can narrow it down. I was hoping that maybe somebody would figure that out. Onward, you know, you, the attack in the library in Walnut Creek, three years ago, almost four now, changed the course of my health for years. I tried to get an attorney, and he was shot dead, and down in San Bernardino. In fact, that's the story of my life. And I even went to Dreamforce to work on Sunday. I was kicked out by the end of the day. They had me on what's called a BOLO. I'm sure you know what that means. And that's because when I left the Oracle World 2019, three months, about 60 days later, I'm in the hospital from being strangled. I was thrown out of.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Barbara Guinness.
Hello, my name is Barbara Guinness, and I've been a resident of Walnut Creek since 1996. I just have a couple of questions for council, the mayor, or possibly a city manager. I ask Public Works these questions at least three times, and they don't seem to be responding right now. The cattle, the first question, the cattle have not grazed in southwest Lime Ridge this year. So I was wondering if you could please advise when the cattle will return to southwest Lime Ridge for grazing. With Walnut Creek in a severe extreme drought, it's very important they graze on the high grasses and plants that to help mitigate the heavy fuel load, you know, potential for a wildfire. My second question is, the public learned in April 2022 that Public Works was hiring a consultant to continue more environmental reporting on the proposed high-speed mountain bike flow trail in southwest Lime Ridge. Inquiries on who the consultant would be were sent to Public Works in April, June, July. Then finally, in late July, they advised, they had hired somebody for $65,000, and it was NCE, NCE is the name of the company. Then, in early August, they confirmed that the two items that are listed in the task descriptions were the first stages that were being worked on now with the consultant. First one is meetings, coordination, peer review. The second one is public outreach and scoping. So I've had three more inquiries in August and September to Public Works, but they've not, not provided any information on these two beginning stages, which I just stated. So I wonder if you could provide an update or provide any information on these beginning stages, or if you can advise when and where the public outreach and scoping is occurring for this second task, which says public outreach and scoping. If you don't have this information, please advise who I can go to to get this public information. Thank you very much for all you do for the city, and appreciate you giving me the time to make my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guinness. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Casey.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Okay. I'm Charles Clancy, retired GIS analyst and 48-year Walnut Creek resident. Using USGS and County Speaker project data, I create maps and other graphics to help save Seven Hills Ranch, understand the speaker proposal, and respond to the DEIR. The parcel is under county jurisdiction, but is next to Heather Farm Park, several Walnut Creek neighborhoods, and Seven Hills School. Seven Hills Ranch is rolling terrain that is formed on bedrock at or near the surface, that is readily visible and is documented in the draft EAR by AS Geotechnical Group Report, Appendix G. The speaker proposal calls for grading that would excavate large volumes of bedrock. For the big apartment building in nearby Villas, the entire western hill would be leveled by cutting up to 28 feet of bedrock. For the maintenance building, over 20 feet of bed, depth of bedrock would be cut from the existing hill. To recontour the eastern ridge, 11 feet depth of bedrock would be removed from the top. Speaker's proposal doesn't delve into bedrock issues. The DEIR discusses bedrock under existing conditions and mitigation, but says that the impact would be less than significant impact with mitigation incorporated without specifying the mitigation. For now, we're left to consider the impact of rock hammers, cutters, rippers, dozers, and/or graders, all of which would generate lots of noise, dust, air pollution, and vibration, in some cases, very close to homes. For at least a year, the site would resemble a quarry, especially if cut bedrock is processed onsite for use as fill. Speaker predicts that 75,000 cubic yards of material, perhaps including bedrock, would be exported. This would require thousands of heavy, heavy dump truck runs on Walnut Creek neighborhood streets and YVR for at least a year. All of this impact would be felt by.
Thank you, Mr. Clancy. We did receive your written correspondence on this item as well. Thank you for that. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Sue Hamel.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Thank you. My first time. I'm a longtime Walnut Creek resident, speaking in support of Ms. Zeimer's Free and Fair Elections Resolution Proposal. I'm a volunteer poll worker here in Contra Costa County, so I've seen firsthand the efforts that are made to ensure that ballots are securely cast. It's a serious chain-of-custody process, but I've also heard voters at a polling place loudly challenge that the process is secure. These doubters may have a baseless message, but it sneaks in and starts to undermine people's trust in the process. Frankly, it's a little annoying, and I wish these doubters would take the time to be a volunteer poll worker, because it would change their mind about the integrity of the process. But I don't think that's gonna happen. So a strong statement about our commitment to the integrity of the process would be most welcome. I urge you to agendize and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamel. Next speaker?
Next speaker is O.G. Strogatz.
Good evening. I'm O.G. Strogatz. I'm a member of Indivisible Resistors Walnut Creek, and I'm calling tonight to ask that prior to the upcoming November 8th elections, you pass a city resolution committing to free and fair elections. It's crucial to counter the spread of disinformation regarding the integrity of our country's voting processes. Your resolution committing to free and fair elections and to the peaceful transfer, transfer of power will send a strong, necessary reaffirming message to our community, underscoring your accountability at the municipal level. I appreciate your taking this opportunity to stand up for the most fundamental principles of our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strogatz. Do we have any other speakers?
No additional speakers.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public communications, and I would bring it back to my colleagues and ask if you have any questions or comments related to the public comments we've received. Okay. Mayor Protam Silva.
Thank you very much for those who've either come here to give us public comments or who phoned it in. I'm sure we'll have a brief conversation about the proposed resolution. But I would like to mention that to anyone who is interested in what is happening in our open space and related to Lime Ridge, be sure you're on the public information email system list, and then you will be getting the appropriate information when it is time for public information and for meetings, et cetera. And to Mr. Clancy, I hope you submitted your comments to the county, because they belong in the county regarding the environmental impacts, and that discussion will take place at the county.
Thank you for those clarifications, and any other comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Wilk?
Well, I'll just bring out, and thank you, Councilmember Silva, for reminding the public that this is a county project on county land, owned by a private company on county land as well.
It's private land in unincorporated county.
Right, exactly. I do want to thank the speakers who spoke regarding the resolution on committing to principles of democracy and free and fair elections. I think we have seen this across the country, not necessarily here, but across the country, where there's been doubting of some of the elections and the veracity, and, and, and right now, there has been nothing proven in any voting precinct in the entire country that there was any kind of fraud. So I think this is the kind of thing that we're able to really show that we have faith in our county, faith in our elections, faith in our county clerk, and the fact that we believe in our elections and the democratic process. So I would like to see this agendized. I know that we don't have a meeting until October 18th due to the Kippur holiday on October 4th, so I would like to see it agendized on October 18th.
Councilmember Haskew.
I'd, I'd also like to see this carried forward as the second generation. I started as a poll worker when I was 18, and I have often not been a poll worker in two or three or four counties, and I know that our election system is done with care and with respect for the voter and respect for the outcome. And I'd just like a way for this council to say that we know the system works.
Councilmember Darling?
Yeah, I would support that. I think in normal times, we would not need to be restating the obvious, but this is one of those times where restating the obvious sometimes feels good.
Mayor Protam Silva.
So I would support this as well, but I'm asking staff, do we not have a meeting on the, is my calendar off as usual? Do we have one on the 11th? And this doesn't require a regular meeting, because that would be a special meeting, but we could do this at the special meeting. So I would change to suggesting October 11th.
That's fine with me. It's.
That'll be the first day possible for all those mail-in ballots to be, to have landed in homes.
That's a good point. I certainly would support that.
I'm in agreement as well. Sorry, Councilmember Haskew.
And I want to remember, I want to remind the public that today is Registration Day, and yet again, it's time to register to vote, because we count on you. You're the, you're the people that make our democracy great.
I was just gonna add, I have zero doubt in the sanctity of our elections. I think Councilmember Wilk pointed out, they've been proven to be credible over and over again, and, but I think Councilmember Darling said at some point, you do need to restate the obvious, and this is one of those times, so I would be in support. Do we need a formal motion to put it on the agenda? No. I think staff has the, the direction they need and a draft resolution to work with, so that would come back on our October 11th agenda. Great. So we'll move on then to council member and staff announcements, reports on activities or requests, closed session announcements. Madam City Attorney, do we have any?
No closed session announcements, Mayor.
Thank you. City manager reports, Mr. Buckshy.
I do not have an update this evening, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to council member reports. They're staring each other down. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Haskew.
It's fun to go first. So this was, this was a very busy couple of weeks for me. In addition to the fact that almost, you know, we all went to the conference, the Lega Cities Conference, Cal Cities Conference in Long Beach, and I would like to tell you, they actually had things that I could use. It was pretty exciting, especially about the safety of pop-ups and how to, how to help design them. And so I'm going to have a very strong opinion about what we do in the future. But at the same time I was down there, I also am the chair of the Planning Committee for Contra Costa Transportation Authority, and because we were working on a time-limited vote to make a grant for A-BAG to put us in line to get our share of $56.8 million in grants to help improve our county's roads, we held that meeting. Oh, I also intended the, and it's, it is so nice to attend these things when you're not a candidate, but I intended the, attended the coffee with the candidates, and I think our candidates, all of them, did a fine job. I mentioned this not because it's particularly a city thing, but Lumen Hughes Memorial was a week ago, Saturday. He and his family have been serious founders and supporters of so many of our city things, such as Roof Band, Craft Garden, the Symphony at, at the Leisure Center, the Leisure Center, all kinds of things. And so it was a, it was, in one sense, a sad occasion, and in one sense, a happy occasion, because there were so many people that had, that were part of our city. So it was like a meeting of, of all of those. And then, just because I had nothing else to do, I had to go to a Contra Costa Transportation Authority retreat that went on for two days. The first day was when we were envisioning the future transportation, and there were some pretty incredible ideas. And, and all of us got together and brainstormed, and some of them were unexpected as well. So part of our job is to figure out which of those that we're going to pursue. And the other thing that kind of touched my heart, which isn't the right word, but it touched me that so many people said, nobody knows about Contra Costa Transportation Authority. They think that all of our roads are funded and done by Caltrans, and so the fact that we found funding and we're organizing the 48, Highway 424, the one that goes to East County, the overpass, Highway 4, I guessed right the first time, Highway 4, and, and we figured out how to get money from the federal government, the state government, and anybody else that would pass, in addition to the sales tax that helped form the Contra Costa Transportation Authority. So you can count on me mentioning the Contra Costa Transportation Authority at least two to three times a meeting, because we're gonna know about us in Walnut Creek. I'm done.
That's great. Thank you. Councilmember Wilk?
Thank you. Yeah, well, as Councilmember Haskew said, we were at the Cal Cities Conference in Long Beach a couple of weeks ago, and it was amazing, not just the turnout, which was terrific, but the sessions, which were so timely and, and so involved with what we're actually doing right now. Things like sessions on fire and crime, and discussing Prop 47, which really goes to, yeah, do we need to do reform on, on Prop 47? Obviously, that was a vote by the people, so that would have to go back to the state of California as well. Working well with council members. I saw a lot of my fellow council members and working well with council members, so I was glad to see that, too. I think we're doing all right there, actually. And, and of course, COVID recovery. So all of these sessions, I thought, were really, really helpful and useful in meeting people that are dealing with exactly the same situations that we are. people that are dealing with exactly the same situations that we are in Walnut Creek. I also attended the BART 50th anniversary celebration, and I believe the Mayor Protam Silva was there as well. We are still about at 30% where we were in 2019 in terms of ridership, so 70% below where we were then. And of course, a lot of that has to do with the fact that people are not back in the offices yet in San Francisco. And frankly, we're looking at, what does this mean for offices, office space throughout the Bay Area, including Walnut Creek, and how is this going to look into the future? I think we all recognize the fact that without BART, the Bay Area would be a very, very different place, and Walnut Creek would be a different place as well because we really have been able to capitalize on the fact that we have two BART stations that are here. So we'll see how that looks, but it was great to see some old faces, new faces, a lot of faces that represent cities throughout the Bay Area. There was a civic affairs forum for the Chamber of Commerce that they ran, talking about candidates for our own election. Of course, the mayor and Mayor Protam were there. They did a terrific job, only had a couple of minutes to speak, which I think is difficult for anybody, but I think especially for our mayor and Mayor Protam that have so much experience to come back on, and of course, the other two candidates that are also part of our election as well. So again, I encourage everybody to make sure that you're voting. Your vote means a lot, and your local representation means more than ever for dealing with what you actually do. 90% of your day is involved within Walnut Creek, and the local government impacts that. So I just certainly do recommend everybody to take that very seriously. The mayor and I attended our city's DEI Task Force, and we were able to identify some specific ideas to move forward on, which will be presented to the city council within the next few months. So keep tabs on that one. And then finally, John Muir had its topping for its pavilion opening that the mayor, Mayor Protam and I were able to attend last weekend, or I guess it was last week, it's all running into each other now. And again, it's so great to be able to have this upcoming cancer center right in our own backyard. It's amazing how fast they've moved on this. They were expecting this not to be done until sometime in later 2024. It looks like it's going to be done in early 2024, and things are moving well. So this is going to be really an exciting and a necessary addition to the city of Walnut Creek and the quality of life that we all have, and that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Darling.
Thank you. So I, too, enjoyed Cal Cities. It's always fun to hear what else everybody else is dealing with, and I wanted to recognize Mayor Protam, she cracked the whip for the entire year on those folks at Cal Cities as President, and she makes the trains run on time, and it was a great conference.
Staff, it takes a huge village.
Yeah. The other Chamber of Commerce presentation recently was civic affairs, and our police chief and the deputy district attorney did a great presentation on talking about crime that in Walnut Creek and how the two are working together. They gave us a great update on some of the Rolex watch robberies that had been troublesome, and I think we're seeing good progress there. I also went to the regular chamber meeting. There's a lot of the normal stuff starting to happen again. The ice rink will be back this year with full-on birthday parties and everything, Oktoberfest, trick-or-treat, Lindsay Wildlife Museum bash at the end of this month, a lot of good things coming back. This morning, the mayor and I had, or this afternoon, I don't know, it's a long day, we had the Public Education Subcommittee, and we had a great presentation on the seat at the table from the youth commissioners, and the staff said that at the first transportation commission, the new youth commissioner really came up with some great insight, so that was good. But we also got a great presentation from our transportation department about the safe routes to school plan that they are just starting on. They are going to reach out to a lot of the parents, a lot of the schools, they're going to do a lot of data collection to try to help us figure out on a more programmatic basis where we can really make changes in the streets in our city to make students safer to get to school by walking, rolling, you know, getting out of the cars. And then the last thing I did, it was this morning, East Bay Leadership Water Environment Task Force, my old boss, Felicia Marcus, came to town, and she's just a ball of fun to listen to. She gave an overview of five recycled water case studies that she has written a paper on. She's a visiting professor at Stanford now, and the case studies are all over the United States, everywhere from Chesapeake Bay down to Southern California. And she had something that she said was really kind of one of the key things that made things work in these, and she said it was working with water recycling typically involves wastewater, it involves who's using the water, it involves the water district, it involves the city, and she said partnerships was the key thing, and she had a great way of explaining it. She says, we're all dealing with the same pair of pants, we're just in different pockets, and how you get people to recognize we're in the same pair of pants is a key to one of those five case studies that she presented, so that's my report.
Actually, I just wanted to quickly interject something that Councilmember Darling had mentioned regarding the civic affairs and hearing from this terrific hour from our own police chief as well as the DA's office. And I really encourage anybody, you can go back in the recording, and you can do that for yourself, because that gives the accurate facts and some details and what happens after somebody's arrested. And this was really great factual information. I encourage you to go there and not just pay attention and not just look to see what's happening on Nextdoor, Facebook, or social media, where people who may think they know something, and there's a lot of false information that's spread around, a lot of misinformation. I encourage you to go to the Chamber of Commerce website and check that out because that's the real facts, and if there's questions that come from that, then our own police department as well as the DA's office can answer those questions that come directly from those facts. But thank you for bringing that up because that's a great point.
Good advice. Mayor Protam Silva.
Thank you very much, and thank you to my colleagues for joining us at the annual conference for the League of California Cities. It was held in Long Beach from September 7th through 9th. I did not get to participate in many of the sessions like you all did, so I'm glad they were good and that you were able to take full advantage of them. I seem to have a different agenda than most other people. But I will say, at the end on Friday was the General Assembly, which is the annual meeting of all of the cities that are members of Cal Cities, and there are 479 cities that are members. And we had a robust discussion over Thursday and Friday on housing law and how to retain local authority. And then we also approved the bylaws changes that you all looked at at the last meeting. So thank you for the time that you took on those bylaws changes. I would like to add on to the civic affairs forum from this last week, just to say that I wanted to, and Chief Knox has left for the evening, but I just wanted to say, if Chief Knox watches this, that his participation in that was very, very much appreciated. I serve on the advisory committee or the steering committee for the civic affairs forum. I would announce since we won't have another meeting this month that the next civic affairs forum will be Tuesday, October 11th, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., and it will be a forum for the candidates for District 4 supervisor. The, I am a member of the board of the Walnut Creek Sister City International Organization. Our mayor this year serves as council liaison to that organization. We had a robust discussion on Monday evening about what's happening in both Italy and Hungary with our sister city organizations, and also the ability to restart our youth ambassador exchange program. Both country, both sister cities, Shia folk in Hungary and Nocetto in Italy are saying it's not yet time to restart the program. For Hungary, it's because there's a war at their border, and they are still not yet really dealing with things well. And in Italy, it's because there's a war a few countries away, which has caused economic upheaval, and the Italian government collapsed in July, early August, and they had to reform the government. The prime minister resigned. So both countries, we won't be able to restart the program for a while, but they are keeping in touch with that. I also attended BART's 50th anniversary celebration, and it was interesting when they opened during the ceremony, they opened the time capsule from 1972, and the things that they were pulling out of the time capsule and what they put in for the 50-year time capsule. So that was pretty hilarious, actually. And the John Muir topping was when, to explain it to the public, the last steel beam goes up on a new building, it's called the topping, and so this was the last steel beam. And traditionally, since the time of the Vikings, the last steel beam has a small conifer tree on it, which also happened when we topped the New Downtown Library about 12 years ago, and also had an American flag on it, many, many people signed it. But it was memorable and also just really an honor to realize that we will have a cancer research and service delivery center based in Walnut Creek, and it will be, it's a partnership with UCSF and John Muir Health. And I would mention finally that Community Service Day is Saturday, October 8th. This is the last council meeting before then. Signups are currently going on. We're about 50% full. We still have room for people to volunteer at many of our schools, in our parks, and local neighborhood food drives. So go to walnut-creek.org/service, or just wait to see the photo on the homepage of the website, roll by and click on it, and I hope to see you there that Saturday. Thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you all for what you're doing, and along with, we had a full contingent from Walnut Creek there. In addition to the council, we had our city manager, Dan Buckshy, Assistant City Manager, Terry Kilgore, and our Assistant City Attorney, Ally Wolf, at the league conference. Obviously, we're proud that our colleague just completed her term, Cindy Silva, as the president of the League of Cities, and it was a successful conference. I was particularly struck by the keynote speakers, Jill Ellis, who is the head coach of the women's soccer, the World Cup-winning women's soccer team from 2015 and 2019. She gave us a pep talk at the end. I felt like I was ready to get on the soccer field and play soccer, but, and also Dr. Landea Jose from the Public Policy Institute of California gave a talk about the future of California, and that was interesting as well. I was proud, along with the mayor of Lafayette, Teresa Garinger, to accept the Helen Putnam Award, which is an award given for excellence in government on behalf of the 19 cities in Contra Costa and the county for the county's A3 program that provides behavioral health services for anyone, anywhere, anytime. And I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Haskew, for sending a letter to the county and getting that initiative started. Let's see. You've mentioned, most of my colleagues have mentioned the other things, so I'll try not to duplicate what they've said. In terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion, just point out that there is a diversity fair at Rossmore on October 11th from 10:00 to 3:00. I believe if you go to the gate and say you're there for the diversity fair, you should be able to get in, and if you have a problem, just say the mayor said you could get in. There's a diversity fair at Rossmore, October 11th, 10:00 to 3:00. I serve on an ad hoc committee for Recycle Smart. Recycle Smart is the joint powers authority that Walnut Creek is a member of, along with other cities in Central County and the county, that provides the trash and recycling services. And we are in the process of recruiting for a new executive director. We're very pleased with the candidates that we received, and we'll be continuing the interview process with the full board in early October. And then the only other item I want to point out is I had the pleasure of welcoming PAC 248, the Cub Scouts here, to the chamber earlier today, and got a lot of great questions. They were excited to see the police cars and talked to Officer Hall, and we had a good visit. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on to our consideration item. We have one consideration item tonight entitled "Draft: Sixth Cycle Housing Element." At this time, I would invite staff to make their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. We're, this is a bit of a team effort, so we'll be bringing in the PowerPoint from Zoom, but I'll be leading it off. Just to introduce myself, of course, I'm Andy Smith, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department, and we have, as you probably have figured by the thickness of the document, we have quite a bit to cover tonight, and I want to thank you for dedicating so much time, this being really the only consideration item on tonight's agenda, and so I want to thank you for, ooh, that's not supposed to happen, the screen going up.
It'll get through faster.
Yeah. I want to thank you for dedicating so much time to this subject matter. As I mentioned, we have a fair bit to go through, but we will be very efficient in that, and actually, I want to start off by saying that we have a lot of good news, really, to provide to this council, and that really is the result of many years of strong leadership from this and previous councils that we're benefiting and continuing to benefit from today. And I'm being told that the Zoom gods are working. We will have some stuff on the screen in a moment. Also tonight, we have some policy considerations for this council to consider and weigh in on with regard to this document. I'm being told to, I'm not as good as Johnny Carson.
Vamp.
There we go. There we go. So yes, there is our Fine City. When we go ahead to the next slide, actually, I'll introduce the team. There we go. So this is the core team that's working on the housing element update. Of course, there's the guy on the left there with a little less weight and a little more hair than today, but we have a strong consulting team that is helping us out here. We've got Nancy Brigato from Brigato Planning. She's really actually acting as kind of an extension of staff through this process. And then we have Hita Mosesman and Arlanda Martinez from Harrison Associates, which are the main housing element update consultants. And of course, they have a strong team behind them, as frankly do I, behind, above, next to. And I do actually want to make a particular mention here in the House tonight, we have Sherluna Vien, who's our Assistant Housing Planner, who has been, is our expert on really all things housing and our housing programs and policies, and has put a great deal of work into this as well, and the assistance, work, and leadership from our Community Development Director, Erica Vandembrand. And with that, I'm actually going to go ahead and turn this over to Hita to take the next portion of this presentation.
Thank you, Andy, and good evening to the mayor and members of the city council. As Andy said, I am Hita Mosesman. I'm Vice President of Community Development and Housing with Harrison Associates. We are the city's housing element consultant, and I wanted to start by going over some of the background housing element requirements. It is required by state law. It is an element of the city's general plan that needs to be updated every eight years, again, by state law, to reflect changes in housing demand and legislative changes. The city does receive an allocation that it must plan for a number, and we'll go into the specifics of that number on the next slide. That number originates with the state of California and then flows through A-BAG, who then allocates a certain number of units to each jurisdiction in the region. So that allocation that I spoke of is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, that I'll refer to during the presentation. This table really presents what the RENA is for Walnut Creek, and again, this came directly from A-BAG. You've got 5,805 units, and as you can see, they're in different income categories that are based on the gross income of households as compared to the area median income, or AMI, of the county, in this case, Contra Costa County. So for example, a low-income household would be one that has a gross income that's 51% to 80% of the area median income of Contra Costa County. You can see there are various income categories that must make up the RENA. And additionally, HCD, or the State Department of Housing and Community Development, their guidance requires that there must be an extra buffer amount of units, 15% to 30% above this RENA sort of minimum, which really brings the requirement for the housing element to a little over 6,300 units. The sites inventory in your housing element is a very critical chapter because it lays out the specific properties where housing is planned. It has a specific number of units for each site, and it has the income categories for those units on each site as required by state law. We also have in the housing element, Appendix C, which is sort of like an Excel spreadsheet in an HCD, required to. in an HCD required template that provides lots of information about each one of the sites. So as I said in the earlier slide, you need to accommodate at least 6,333 total units at different levels of affordability for the next eight years. Through the analysis that we conducted, taking into account things like market data and market research, assessed value of improvement and land, vacancies, and property owner interest as well as building age, we were able to identify 121 sites that have a capacity for a total of 6,521 units. A little over 3100 of those units would be for lower-income, meaning very low and low income households. And the good news is the city is not anticipating any rezoning because of the city's very proactive planning efforts over the last several years and sort of that forward-thinking to accommodate higher densities and more housing units. This slide depicts the, those 121 sites in terms of the city boundary. And as you can see, many of them are clustered in the downtown core area, which is near transit and jobs, which is very aligned and consistent with state planning guidance to achieve state initiatives such as climate and affordable housing. There is a chapter on resources that are available to further housing efforts, both planning and implementation efforts as well. Just to start out with the buckets of those, federal, state, regional, and local. From the federal standpoint, the city does get CDBG, or Community Development Block Grant monies, every year from the federal government that can be used for housing. The city has also obtained 340 housing vouchers that can be used for affordable housing units from the county. On the state level, the city has really been successful in securing a number of state grants to do things like pre-designed ADU plans, to facilitate and incentivize ADUs to doing objective design standards, a parking study, and funding for homeless services, as well as, so really, the planning and the implementation of, with an affordable housing focus. We anticipate other grants will be available on an annual basis as we move through the eight-year planning period. There are funding sources available regionally, for example, the Advancing California Financing Authority and the One Bay Area Organization. On a local level, the city does hold, you know, quite a bit of resources in their housing trust fund, and these come from inclusionary and linkage fees, grant awards, and allocations from the general fund to supplement CDBG and for homeless services as well. And there's about a half million dollars that's set aside from the former redevelopment agency that can be used for affordable housing. State law requires that we identify any income-restricted affordable housing units that have income restrictions that would be expiring during the eight-year period. There are 222 units at risk of this expiration in three projects in the city. However, we believe that the risk of conversion is low, given how these units are subsidized and the fact that they're all owned by nonprofit organizations. And the city does have housing resources to assist if that is a need. Another critical chapter of the housing element is the constraints section. And on this slide, what we've done is to identify the constraints in the housing element, but also identify the programs that have been proposed to address or mitigate those constraints. So I'm going to show you all of these columns to start, to describe the fact that the blue columns here, they really represent constraints that come from the city's zoning code and policies and ordinances needing to be updated to reflect legislative changes that have occurred related to housing the last few years. So looking at things like procedures for by right developments as required by state law, for persons with disabilities, protocols, and updated zoning ordinance requirements for certain types of residential facilities. Under land use controls, transit priority projects would be exempt from environmental review, and the codes would just need to be updated to reflect that. Those constraints highlighted in green to the right, those represent market constraints. The city has limited influence over market constraints, whereas the blue are more considered governmental constraints. However, there are programs proposed, such as looking at parking, the less parking that needs to be constructed, the more units can be constructed, and it makes the feasibility of housing work a little bit better when parking is right-sized. Additionally, the city intends to pursue state, local, and federal funding for affordable housing projects to provide subsidies. There is a chapter that reviews the progress on the last housing element cycle or the fifth cycle as well. And through the city's actions and leadership and proactive planning practices, 2,216 units have been assisted, rehabilitated, developed, or approved during the last cycle, including over 400 affordable units. When you compare that number to the RENA of 2,235, you're very, very close to your RENA number when you look at what the city has accomplished over the last eight years. These numbers are evolving constantly as there are more housing projects and more units assisted, and so those numbers will be updated for the final certified version that is anticipated for the spring of next year. Specific accomplishments under, I guess, generally housing for the city would be projects like the Walnut Creek Transit Village, which was almost 600 units, and removing limitations to accessory dwelling units and making those more accessible, as well as establishing fees and policies for affordable housing when market rate development occurs. With specifically to special needs housing, the city has accomplished facilitating set aside units in a number of projects for special needs populations, such as persons with disabilities and large families, as well as funding for legal services for seniors and funding for emergency rent and utility assistance. The Goals, Policies, and Programs chapter would be Chapter Eight of your housing element. It contains quite a number of programs. Some of those are, have remained unchanged from the fifth cycle. Some have been modified to reflect current practices or current laws, and then others are new to the housing element. And again, from housing laws, new resources that are available or to address maybe constraints and fair housing issues that are different this time around than the last cycle. Some of these programs are within the categories that you see on this slide. So for example, training, education, and awareness, this would be, this would be for the development community as well as internally at the city, to make sure that development, that information is shared and development can be streamlined, particularly affordable housing development, to get those units built in a more expeditious manner. The investment of resources, and there's a particular focus on affordable housing here, as well as encouraging ADUs and providing legal assistance for renters. And then lastly, ordinance compliance, which would be updating the city's zoning ordinance and policies to comply with those state law changes that I had mentioned in an earlier slide. Affirmatively furthering fair housing is analyzed in Appendix B in your housing element. This is new to housing elements this cycle. There was a new law that was passed, and it requires that we identify any fair housing issues in the city, and nearly all communities have fair housing issues, and then enact programs to address or mitigate those issues. And these issues generally fall in about five sort of categories. Access to housing opportunity is really related to affordable housing and the demand for affordable housing being larger than the supply. So the city has proposed programs to assist with the development of affordable housing projects, to expand the supply and provide more access. Displacement risk is really tied to affordability. As wages have not grown at the same pace as housing costs have, affordability is an issue for many households, and displacement risk has increased as a result of that. The city has proposed programs to collaborate with community-based organizations to find out where and how this is happening, where this risk is, and to implement displacement prevention activities and provide some assistance. In terms of fair housing enforcement, the city is proposing to enhance funding to support fair housing, again, providing assistance to renters and providing more information and resources to the community. Environmental hazards was an issue that was identified related to air quality. In response to this, there are programs to address energy efficiency and concentration and conservation, excuse me, to reduce exposures to environmental pollution, lowering GHG emissions to improve air quality. And lastly, a level of regional and local cooperation was also identified, and this, the programs are really centered around collaborating with those regional entities, with the county on programs, on partnering for, to implement affordable housing, and to address homelessness. So we wanted to provide you, ooh, okay, wanted to provide you with a timeline of sort of where we are in the process and where we've been and where we're going. The housing element was taken to Planning Commission in late July, which kicked off the 30-day public review period. The document was then taken to the HCD Committee of the City Council for review and input. We collected input from both bodies. We took input from the public. We revised the housing element based on the comments received, and it was sent to HCD to kick off their 90-day review period on September 5th. Now we're at the September 20th Housing, excuse me, City Council meeting to present the housing element document to you. We expect comments back from HCD in early December. We expect to turn around a revised version based on HCD's comments and edits in mid-January and expect certification and ultimately, city council adoption in the spring of next There has been a robust public participation process that was implemented, and the administrative record of that process is presented in Appendix A of the housing element. It started with Planning Commission and the City Council receiving and commenting on a community engagement plan that was then revised and then implemented to include two community workshops, four focused stakeholder meetings with developers both market rate and affordable, service providers, fair housing providers, and housing advocates. A dedicated website for the housing element process was established with resources and information that are updated. An online community questionnaire was also posted, and we'll review the results of that on the next slide. And then flyers were distributed at the farmer's market. There was an article in the nutshell, and the city sent out emails to over 3,000 recipients on city mailing lists. The community questionnaire was published in March. We collected over 100 responses, and some of the major takeaways from the responses was that affordability was really the primary issue that was noted. In terms of important factors in choosing housing, cost was the number one, as well as the desirability of neighborhood. Over 60% would like to buy a home in Walnut Creek, but affordability is a limiting factor. Over 75% responded that they didn't believe that housing was affordable in the city. Close to 60% either know someone or they themselves moved out of the city due to affordability issues. And when asked what the top program priority should be for the housing element, the top two responses were to allow housing in commercially zoned areas, which aligns with the site inventory that I showed on the map, that has the cluster around sort of the commercial downtown area of the city, as well as more housing, fair housing services, which was included as a program in the housing plan. Some of the feedback that we received from the Planning Commission and the HCD Committee, we wanted to sort of provide you with the high-level takeaways. First, that the site inventory map, you know, the scale made it a little bit challenging to read, so we broke that map up into larger-scale, multiple larger-scale maps with tables following it. So it was a little bit easier to see by sections of the city what the, which properties were included, and then the detail on those properties. And that would be in Chapter Seven. Additionally, we received feedback that, due to the size of the document, it was challenging for the reader to quickly pick up key topics and, you know, take, key takeaways from the housing element. So we then drafted an executive summary that comes prior to Chapter One that summarizes the key takeaways and the key findings of the housing element. And just as a note, the Planning Commission at their meeting in July did authorize the submittal of the draft housing element with edits to HCD. In terms of the public input that was received after the close of the 30-day public review period, the overall themes of that input were concern or questions about why certain sites were chosen and the reasoning behind that, about the historical production of very low-income units, and that might not have been as high as what we're projecting for the next period, and also where the funding comes from for affordable housing. So how we addressed the input was that we provided additional detail in the sites inventory on moderate and above-moderate sites. So when I say that, sites that include just moderate and above-moderate units. The law says that we need to provide evidence and detail on lower, sites that have lower-income units on them, which we did in the original draft. However, that was not done to the same degree for the moderate and the above-moderate. But what we did is we did provide that same level of detail for every site, so it would be clear why those were chosen. And then we also highlighted pertinent information related to very low-income units and funding for affordable housing, to make that very clear, how these things were going to be And at this juncture, I wanted to turn the rest of the presentation back to Andy, who's going to talk to you about some accomplishments and some policy consideration.
Thank you, Hita. So that's a lot of information, of course, and so kind of want to, I guess, focus our attention here. You know, it really is worth saying, what are we doing well? You know, production of housing, as was stated, we've already reached 99% of our current arena allocation, or our current RENA. And the city has long provided funding for the actual development of affordable housing here in Walnut Creek, such as through the inclusionary housing and in-lu fees and commercial linkage fees, as well as going after, as was noted earlier in the presentation, successfully gaining various grant funding opportunities. The city also has long supported the development of accessory dwelling units, ADUs. We have a streamlined permitting process, and coming soon, we actually will have construction-ready pre-approved plans for people to take advantage of if they are wishing to go with conventional construction rather than modular. Modular, of course, the plans are prepared by the manufacturer. And particularly of importance in regard to our current RENA is that the city has been very progressive in planning for more housing, notably the West and North Downtown-specific plans, which have been able to accommodate a very sizable chunk of the current, or the upcoming sixth-cycle RENA. So if we go to the next slide. There we go. So where we're really focusing in terms of policies and programs in this housing element, and what perhaps would have the most impact, is really just furthering the existing programs and policies, furthering the work that we've already been doing and have been really quite successful, and then adding additional areas that are here on your screen, and this was discussed in the previous slide, so I won't list them out individually, but I do want to highlight two in particular. One, and this was actually something where we've added an additional focus in response to some public comment that we received with regard to basically providing or facilitating communication between the market rate development community and the affordable housing community and affordable housing developers. And that's something we really want to focus on more moving forward. As an example, if we can bring a market rate developer together with a nonprofit or a As an example, if we can bring a market rate developer together with a nonprofit or an affordable housing developer who may be able to provide funding to build, to provide, or to assist in the construction of affordable units and an otherwise market rate development, the market rate developer has an incentive there because there's state density bonus. So there's a little bit of a win-win situation there. And so trying to facilitate those connections to further provide housing, really mixed-income housing here in Walnut Creek. And then in that far-right box, it seems like a kind of a basic thing of just, you know, making sure that our zoning regulations are in sync with state law, but as I'm sure you all well know, that's an ever-moving target. And the city of Walnut Creek really takes a very thoughtful approach to that. And, you know, it's not just a, it's never just a check-the-box exercise. And we really do our best to achieve the state goals in being able to provide, this, I will say, the state and city goals of providing opportunities for housing for all-income levels, and also doing it in a manner that's sensitive to the, to the local environment. Go to the next slide here. So tonight, we're of course asking for any kind of questions and feedback. Certainly very interested in receiving that from this council, but then also, go ahead and, I thought I'd gotten rid of all the animation here, I guess I hadn't. There's three particular areas that you may wish to focus on with regard to some policy considerations. You know, we've, we've already identified policies, of course, in the housing element, but ask, you know, does this council have any interest in, you know, any additional policies or any further modification to housing policies beyond what is described in the current draft of the housing element? And then another possible, another area for consideration is, as was noted in the presentation, we do have adequate sites, more than adequate sites in fact, to meet our arena numbers. But asking if the council wishes for, to consider any kind of additional measures that might encourage housing or development of housing in Walnut Creek. And then if so, going to the third bullet, asking if the council would want to do that as part of the housing element or as a standalone effort. And the reason for that is because the, if you, essentially, once it's in the housing element, it's something where, of course, then it has to be reported to, you know, progress has to be reported to the state. But it takes away a certain level of flexibility for the city to be able to adjust and modify and try out new programs and be a little more nimble in response. And I'm speaking of things that are basically above and beyond what we need to do, have to do, to meet the state requirements for the housing element. So just things to consider. And with that, go ahead to the next slide and, there we go. And again, thank you, thank you for, again, giving us so much of your time. And be happy, we're all, we have a team of folks here to, available to answer your questions and, of course, take your input, thank you.
Thank you very much, Andy. Thank you for all the hard work that the team put into the document. It's a large document, and it's a draft, I want to emphasize that. And it's, it's gone to the Planning Commission, I believe, and now we're seeing it kind of all put together. So before we dive into kind of specific questions, maybe you could just elaborate again on kind of what feedback and questions would be most helpful for you as staff to hear from us at this point, to help you kind of move the document along. And obviously, we're going to get other opportunities to view this and provide input.
Certainly. I think really there's kind of two, two main areas. One, obviously, is if there's something, when you read it and you're just left scratching your head and it doesn't quite make sense, we definitely want to know about that so that we can address that. And so there's, you know, things of that nature, as well as, you know, as I was mentioning previously about, you know, is there anything more that, anything either different or more that you think we should be doing in terms of housing policy? Whether it be as part of the housing element or as a separate standalone housing policy of the city.
That's helpful. I, so it's about 7:45 now. What I would propose is that we have, say, up to 30 minutes for council questions, because I'd like to hear from the public too and not keep them waiting too long. If there are other questions we need to address after that, we'll do it after public comment and then provide further direction and feedback. So who would like to lead us off?
Can I get clarification?
Sure.
So perhaps you can give us some additional clarification. I believe when I looked at the timeline, this has already gone to the Housing Community and Development Department of this, in Sacramento.
Yes, the first preliminary.
They're in their 90-day review period.
Correct.
In which we will get comments back from them. So at this point, you're not changing this document, you're here to hear from us, but somehow our comments will converge with theirs in December, January. So then what we see back will be a consolidation that addresses both our comments and the, the state's comments.
Exactly.
And then the state will not have approved it at that point. It is due for approval by May?
I believe that's the date. There's two, there's a deadline, and then there's a, I think it's a 45-day grace period. I actually would have to refer to the slide, I forget the exact date, but I think it is May.
So basically, HCD is looking at this right now?
Yes, yes, they are, and we have confirmed that they've received it. Basically, you have to send two drafts through to HCD. There's the first past preliminary draft, which is what they're reviewing right now, and then the final draft, which we would send to them for final okay before adoption by the city.
Thank you for the clarification.
Looks like Ms. Martinez has some further thoughts on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to help Andy out and provide some of the answers on the dates. So the housing element is actually due for the city of Walnut Creek. I think the deadline for the area is January 31st, and then HCD provides 120-day grace period, which is May 31st. So we submitted the housing element, like you mentioned, and it's currently going through the 90-day review period. It'll come back to us by December, and then we will have, you know, like a period to discuss and make changes and all of that. And then it would be taken back to council again to review and approve so that we can submit it to HCD. So it will be, it will come back to you, and we'll have a chance to incorporate comments from council and the public. So there are still some chances to incorporate more into it.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. So who would like to lead us off with questions?
Do you want to hit me? I did.
I think we're all kind of thinking that. Mayor Protem Silva.
I, I'll leave you one minute, no, 20. So in no particular order, I was, just talking about the public, the comments and the input from the community. It seems that the most prevalent comment was about housing affordability. Is this what you're seeing across the state? Then the advantage of having Harrison Associates involved in this is that you have done housing element updates with other communities across California, and much of Southern California was ahead of us. So is that the kind of comment that you are hearing across the state, across the Bay Area, or are we unique? Are we special?
I mean, I think you're special, but not for this, I guess would be the best answer. It, affordability is an issue throughout the state of California right now. I don't think there is a community where there is sufficient housing at a price point that most people can afford across the community. And so you are not unique in that way. Every survey that we've, you know, we've been involved in, every housing element that we've worked on, it's been an issue.
Is that the only issue you're hearing across California? Because it seemed like it was the only issue that we heard about here. Is there something that we seem to be doing well and therefore we're not getting a comment?
Well, you know, I think the fact that you've done, you know, the specific planning that you've done, you know, you've allowed, you know, quite a bit of development to occur. There's been a lot of redevelopment of non-vacant sites. So you have a very good track record of redeveloping site, you know, formerly, you know, commercial or, or other types of uses into, you know, higher density to really maximize sort of the housing potential of the properties within the city. So I would say yes. You know, specific plans pave, you know, they, they take care of SEQA, and they really pave the way and roll out the red carpet for housing development because it removes that constraint, you know, both the time and the cost. And I wanted to say that the programs that are proposed in the housing plan are intended to do just that, is to, you know, remove some of the, not remove barriers per se, but to facilitate the development in a way that is as timely as it can be. Because in the development of any type of property, time is money, and financing and investors require rates of return and things like that. So the more expeditiously, you know, development can occur, it increases the financial feasibility of that development. So I think the city has done those things very well.
So did we receive any specific comments on the 121 sites from the property owners? I, if you don't hear from property owners, I always get concerned that no one is read, no one is listening.
So there was a, 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 a community group, a member of which did reach out to a number of property owners. And one of those property owners did contact us concerned, I guess, though the, I would characterize the nature of the email that was sent to them by this community group as startling in terms of that we were, you know, kind of knocking on their, down their door to develop their property, and they asked to essentially be removed from the list. And so we said sure, I mean, there was, I think, going to be six units. But then, and this is a nonprofit organization, actually, has it happened. And then about a week later, I got an email from them saying, from their executive director, asking to actually be placed back on the list. And so we haven't, otherwise haven't heard from anybody in that regard.
The word suitability is used about the sites. And I was having a conversation with a member of the community yesterday, and I had the sense that suitability doesn't mean necessarily that it will happen because sometimes suitability starts first and foremost, at least in my point of view, of the willingness of the owner of the property. So what do we really mean by suitability?
I'll go ahead and actually let Hita answer that one, I think.
I was going to, I volunteered to answer that question. What we mean by suitability is that pursuant to the legal requirements for housing elements in the government code and pursuant to HCD guidance, they actually have a guidebook on the site inventory selection process, and there are multiple steps, and it's a very long document. But suitability means it adheres to state law requirements and to HCD guidelines. And it, and the best way, I think, to frame it is that considering the factors, you know, real estate market factors, the age of the structure, the investment in the structure, if there is a structure, property owner interest, vacancies, and those things, that redevelopment could, given the, that those data points, redevelopment could happen on those sites. So I would say it that way. And if property owner interest is considered the gold standard of evidence, and that's the way the law refers to how we have to justify lower-income sites that are non-vacant, we have to provide, quote, substantial evidence, end quote, that the properties can redevelop over the eight-year planning period with housing. And so we went through a very, very comprehensive vetting process, looking at multiple data sources, doing sort of a mini-market study for the city of Walnut Creek in terms of development trends. We looked at the city's track record, and we also looked at the track record of 100% affordable housing projects within the Bay Area region, and how those could occur on privately-owned, commercially-used properties. And so there was quite a bit of analysis that went in, but it all really harkens back to what HCD considers and what the government code considers is suitable site, and the fact that these sites, we were able to get that data and that evidence to support that redevelopment could occur.
Or in one sentence, basically, that the market would support development of the sites if the property owner chose to do so.
And I have one last question. Most of the sites that we've selected are concentrated in our core area, the 763 acres or something, something like that, and downtown, near transit trails, other transportation systems, services, jobs. Is there any concern from a fair housing perspective that concentrating all of our housing in this core area will be presumed to be inequitable?
I think, I, I want to let Hita answer that one as well. I think we've talked about these, we were.
Tag, you're it.
Yeah, basically.
Yeah. So, I mean, to answer that question, it's always a balance, you know, with the site inventory criteria that I just explained, and also then fair housing considerations. The reason I think that it does meet the state legal test for fair housing is because specifically, HCD's own 2025 housing assessment that they completed prior to doing the RENA for the sixth cycle, references in several spots, and we quote it in, in the site inventory section of your housing element as well. It states in several sections that it's best practice and consistent with state planning policy to plan for housing around transit and jobs. It enhances affordability for people because if you don't have to have a car, it opens up quite a bit of disposable income for other things like, like housing. Also, it really benefits persons with disabilities where mobility might be an issue, to be located close to services and to transportation as well. And additionally, it furthers climate policies and initiatives by lowering GHG emissions and vehicle miles traveled. So fair housing issues can be related to air quality, it can be related to environmental issues, as we talked about in the slides. So for those reasons, you know, affordability, access to transit and jobs and services, as well as furthering climate goals, we believe that it is consistent with fair housing qualities because fair housing relates to affordability, it relates to special needs populations, and it relates to environmental quality.
So basically, we're locating these sites, we are selecting sites and focusing on the areas where the state agrees with us that that is the best. And we'll find out in December if they, they really agree.
Yes, and in addition to that, also, the, the, the state does look at whether, where these, if these, if the afford, particularly the affordable units are being located in areas of higher, or what they call higher-low resource areas. And that's basically a factor that is dependent on, you know, levels of wealth, education, access to, to jobs, good schools, things of that nature. And actually, Walnut Creek as a whole ranks very highly in that regard. And so in addition to just making good planning sense and meeting the state's criteria for locating housing in the regard, in the ways that Hita was mentioning, we're all, this is also being located in a high-resource area.
And I'm going to pose a question, but I don't need you to answer it at this point. Can you, if you look at the 121 sites and the acreage or the number of units, could you mathematically tell us later in the meeting what percentage are in the core area and what percentage are in other areas? Because certainly we don't want to put all our eggs in one basket. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Darling.
Thanks, and thanks for all the work on this. I, I can't even imagine trying to keep all these tables straight. And this is the second time I've looked at it, and my eyes still are like, whoa. Just a couple of basic questions. I saw in the comments a lot of criticism of the sites inventory for different reasons from groups that were advocating for more housing. It sounds like we are confident that we followed the procedures and our sites inventory is adequate and robust.
Yes, yeah, there was, that one group in particular that went through really parcel-by-parcel and did raise a number of issues. And, and I actually took a fair bit of extra time to respond directly to that author. And really in every, in, with one very small exception that I think netted out three units, I want to say. We had, we had very good justification for every one of the sites that they took issue with. that they took issue with, and was able to explain how we had taken whatever constraints they were highlighting into consideration. You know, for example, they had raised the issue of some of the opportunity sites are located under the, the powered electrical transmission line that passes through downtown Walnut Creek. And so I was able to, of course, point out, I mean, that they've been there for over 100 years, and something we've planned around for ever and ever and ever. But it's also something that development has just built around. And I was able to name, to specifically point out a number of projects that have occurred over the course of the last five decades, in fact, along that power line, up to and including something that is currently in the works with an application in our department for a high-density mixed-use development. So, yeah, we are really very confident in the site's analysis.
Okay. And then, it sounds like you only got one or two of the actual property owners objecting to being in the site's inventory?
Really, it, it was only one, and then they changed their mind.
Okay. And the criticism of us and the affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is something that is very hard for me to say, we've, similar, I think, Mayor Protem questioned this, we're confident that our strategy of placing the, the, the emphasis on the areas downtown where we have transit, we have resources, doesn't run afoul of that.
Yes.
That it's next to a freeway.
Yes.
All right. And then, on the policies, you, you're going to be looking, you, what you, what would be most helpful for us on the policy question, like which things we want to emphasize, or?
Well, really, if there's anything that, that you'd like to see, you know, whether it be a course correction, or an expansion, or something like that, in terms of what's currently being proposed. And then as well, any additional programs or policies that you may wish to, to see, again, whether or not they're in the housing element or as a separate standalone policy.
Because the one thing I was thinking of when I looked at the policies is getting back to that same pair of pants, different pockets. I have heard from several affordable housing developers and people looking at ADUs that connection fees from utilities are problematic. And did you guys look at whether or not it would? I know, I helped one of the local developers look into it with a couple of the utilities that I'm familiar with, and East Bay Mud did have a pilot program to kind of relook at their connection fees for low-income micro home type things. Did we, did you guys look at a policy related to working cooperatively with utility providers to right-size connection fees?
I do want to, actually, Hita, I forget if that is one specifically included, it's something we've certainly discussed.
I looked for it, I didn't find it.
Definitely on our radar, I know that much.
Not only knows where.
But that would be, if it's not in there, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember everything that's in this large.
I looked for it, and I couldn't find it. But that doesn't mean it's not there.
But if it's not in there, that's precisely the kind of input that, that we would be looking for.
Okay. And then, you had one of the policies related to improving public understanding, and that's another area where I've heard, you know, I went to the public meeting for the micro homes, and increasing public understanding of the, the challenges that people face in housing is something that's going to be, you know, are there things that we are already doing in that regard, or is this something that we would be looking to do more of?
I think a little bit of both, to be honest with you.
Okay. All right. Those are my big picture questions, and I'll pass it on.
Councilmember Askew.
So when we were looking at sites, I'm sure we chose the best that fit our requirements. Do we have any other sites in our back pocket? We're going to keep the pants thing going. Do we have other sites in, in case, in case they don't pan out, they don't fit what we, what we're proposing? Do we have backup?
At the moment, we have kind of, I would say, all of our cards on the table, but we actually have enough sites to accommodate not just our RENA plus the buffer, but a little bit more. With the buffer, it's, I think, 6,330 units that we need to accommodate, and we found capacity for, I want to say it was 6,521. So we do have some room just off the bat in case HCD does come back and looks poorly upon some of the sites. But that's not to say that there isn't more out there, it's just that we haven't done the full analysis for additional sites, because we felt we had kind of reached a point where it was enough for now.
Okay. Displacement is something that the council has had to deal with, and the city, the, the houses that were across the street from Bard, and the entire community was uprooted. Can you kind of summarize where we are with displacement and what our capacity is to impact that?
So our current regulations, they're actually in our, our building regulations, and essentially they require for lower-income households, citywide, two months of relocation, two, relocation assistance equivalent to two months of rent, plus some early noticing requirements of, you know, that things are in the works. And within the West Downtown specific plan area, that was increased to a four-month, up to four months of rental, of relocation assistance equivalent to up to four months of rental, or of rent, I should say.
Okay. Then my next question is, there are probably parcels that are outside of those specific plans. We don't have any plan or any way to help with the displacement concerns?
We do have, and Hita can speak a little bit more to this, we do have displacement policy identified in the housing element. I will say that part of the reason why we actually, or why the city, I should say, increased the relocation assistance for the West Downtown specific plan areas, because that's the, the area where we saw the greatest likelihood of displacement occurring in terms of higher-density residential development replacing lower-density residential development, particularly where it's rental housing. Whereas, say, North Downtown specific plan, we really don't anticipate relocation or displacement to, to occur, just because of the nature of what's on the ground right now. And, yeah.
All right. And then my final question is, you're talking about site owners. This is a, this is a partnership between site owners and developers, and, and I'm not real clear how the two meet and how they make this all happen.
In terms of the development of property, I mean?
Yeah.
So really, every case is unique. It's probably no surprise to hear that, you know, development is a very complex beast. And there are some property owners that will, it really runs the gamut of somebody who, on one end, doesn't really even know what their property is worth, and doesn't even enter their mind unless somebody happens to come to them. Then you have the ones that, you know, they know what they've got, and, you know, they're willing to sell it to the highest bidder, you know, for development interests or development companies, developers, I should say, were, were to purchase. And then you have some that are interested in actually going about it themselves, or maybe just getting the site entitled with planning approval, and then flipping it essentially. It really runs the gamut. And, and those are things that are really handled by just, by the market.
Okay. Thank you.
That's great. Councilmember Will.
Thank you. Just a couple foundational questions that I had. So basically, what happens if we don't meet the RENA numbers? What, what, what's the consequence?
In terms of production, you mean?
Production, state, you know, is it grants? I mean, what is it that the city is being held accountable for?
We're, we're being basically held accountable for the planning, and essentially, as I put it, kind of setting the table for development to occur. There's certainly a recognition that the city is not the one building the housing. You know, we can, we certainly can have a part in, and do have a part in facilitating the construction of housing, but ultimately, we're not the ones building it. And the state does recognize that. You know, they're basically checking on whether or not we're doing what we need to do in accordance with state law to approve projects that, you know, meet all the standards.
Right, right. Do you have an idea, just a ballpark, of how many ADUs have been built since the state law went into effect? Was that?
I, actually, we have an extra slide that, we have data going back to 2015. The ADU law goes originally back to 1982, and I don't have that earlier data. But if you'd like, I can, actually, we can bring up the, it looks like Hita's getting ready to reshare her screen, and it's the very last slide in the, in the deck, as I recall. But in the most, two most recent, well, last year and so far this year, I don't want to rely on my memory, I want to say it was like 23 ADUs approved last year, and then so far, about the same amount this year, but it's.
So it's not 100? I mean, I don't need the exact number, but the point is, it's not 100 since the law was.
No, but, and it's going up. You know, the, the state law keeps getting altered and making it effectively easier to do ADUs.
Sure, sure.
I, I asked permission to follow up. I didn't ask it of the mayor, but Kevin had the table. How many of those ADUs are, are like Airbnb? That's probably not the title of the, you know.
Short-term rental?
Short-term rentals, thank you.
I don't have an exact number as to the existing housing stock. I think there have been use permits issued for maybe three in the city to be operated for short-term rental. However, any that were approved or constructed after, I believe it was the beginning of 2019, state law prohibits them from being used for short-term rental?
Thank you.
Okay. And the last question I had had to do with what was on page three in the agenda report, talking about the 22% of the city's population is under the age of 25, which is lower than the county-wide. Walnut Creek seniors who are 65 and older make up 30%, while the, where seniors county-wide is lower at 15%. And of course, it goes into students as well. And I think we all recognize that a lot of that has to do with Rossmore. So I wanted to ask, what's the percentage of seniors and youth, if we take Rossmore out of the equation, are we more within the county median at that point?
You know, that, I would actually have to run the numbers to find out. I will say that it's about one in seven or one in eight residents live in, Walnut Creek residents live within Rossmore. So it's certainly, you know, if you were to, if they were to create their own city and detach from Walnut Creek, it would certainly lower our numbers, but I'd have to, we'd have to run them, you know, do the math to find the exact figure.
I, I bring that up because obviously, that is going to skew it higher in those regards, and we really aren't in control of what Rossmore is developed, building in there. We tend to look at what we're doing in Walnut Creek outside of Rossmore specifically.
Yeah, somewhat, yeah. So Rossmore is, of course, within the city, and we do retain, you know, land use authority in there, but I, it, Rossmore, well, I was going to say Rossmore's built up, so was Walnut Creek. However, and there has been, you know, some development, not in, geez, the last 20 years or 15 years, I want to say, but there has been more recent development than, of course, when it was originally developed in the mid-'60s. The, the ownership structure there, I would say, makes it a little less likely to be redeveloped. You know, same reason for single-family neighborhoods are not so likely to be redeveloped because of the land is parceled out among, you know, myriad of different owners. But we're, we're not anticipating, we're not planning on, as far, for the purposes of the housing element, we're not anticipating any new growth in terms of units in Rossmore.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
All right. Thank you. You're generous enough to leave me one minute for my questions, all of you. I'm going to focus just on a few for now. There's a, in the, I think it's the housing inventory table. It's listing out, it's table 7.8, it's listing out the specific plan units. And the number that's listed for the specific plan units, 4,778, is higher than the number of units that I recall the EIRs for those plans studying.
Let me, oh, not page 7, I say table 7.8, apologize.
Are you referring to the West Downtown and North Downtown, what, or other specific plans as well?
My, my understanding was that was including just those two plans, but if it was including more than just those two plans, I would.
I was just wondering, that's why I asked the question.
We can come back to that later.
So that, yeah, that is, that's a very good question, actually. And I think I can at least partially answer it by saying that the, it really has to do with the assumed density of development. There have been, of course, as I mentioned before, the, the moving target of state housing law, but the state density bonus regulations and, and other regulations have really made it easier for developers to max out the density, both up to and frankly beyond what the zoning allows, the base city zoning allows. And so in response to those, to the effects of those laws, and the type of development that we have been seeing, just in the last five years as an example, we're actually assuming a somewhat higher density of development than was anticipated five years ago. So that's, that's one part of it. But then, the other part is that the EIRs were taking really much, much more of just a pure, of a, of a, of a market-based approach of analysis, figuring in not just, okay, the mar, you know, for the housing element, it's, does the market support development of these sites if the owner chooses to? For the EIRs, we took into consideration, will the owners choose to? And we didn't assume that every site in those plan areas would actually redevelop. And so we were taking a more kind of realistic approach in terms of the environmental analysis for the specific plans. And that's why those numbers were lower, whereas for the, the, the housing element, it's, again, a realistic analysis of the development capacity for the properties, but it's really assuming that if the market supports development, it will happen. And that's as per the, the criteria and guidelines by the state.
There, there's a reference to, later on in the document, a, a particular policy, you don't have to look it up, it's H.27. And I'm just saying it because it's, it's for the, in the MUC zone, and it indicates that we're making a change to allow the ground floor to have 50% commercial. Is that because now the policy requires 100% of the ground floor to be commercial?
No. What it actually is, is that the, the current regulations, and it's kind of this multi-step kind of cascading down from a general plan policy for the mixed-use commercial emphasis areas, that the primary use of the property be commercial. The way that's implemented through the zoning is that it says the primary use of the ground floor will be commercial in the case of a mixed-use development. But there's no numeric standard. And we're now operating in an area where, under state law, we have to have objective standards, such as a numeric standard. Primary, we have, as it's been implemented and interpreted, we've always taken that just to mean, primary means at least half. And so what we're recommending is that we basically actually put that number in, in the code.
I have a little bit different spin on it, but we can get to that later. That we're providing more flexibility by making this change in terms of ground floor.
I would say that we're providing the same level of flexibility as, as we've been just doing in actual practice, but we'll be more transparent in what the standard is.
Okay.
And objective.
There, there was one other, two more questions. There were some reference in the document to the timelines for entitlements. And, and frankly, they seem somewhat ambitious to me in terms of general plan amendments and zone changes, kind of being comparable to a CUP. What, what were, were those based on empirical data or best estimates, or how were those timelines derived?
A lot of it's really kind of best estimates. I mean, we have a relatively small sample size to, to take into consideration for things like GPAs. And really, honestly, in our experience, the greatest variable in those types of applications is how long the applicant takes to respond to comments, to, you know, update plans, things of that nature. And that could be any number of reasons, including just simple, you know, market forces where they're, you know, they have money issues to deal with, and so they pause with the entitlement process, as an example.
The, the last question, this might be more appropriate for Hita. We're not alone in seeing the, our RENA number jump pretty significantly from the fifth cycle, more than double in our case. And do you anticipate that the seventh cycle, was this a one-time correction, or is the seventh cycle going to be a significant increase as well? Or is it, or you don't really know, we don't really know yet?
I, I would say that it's, it's correct that, that most communities received a higher RENA allocation. It's been my personal observation, it seems that where there is a good amount of transit and jobs, those communities got, had the largest increase. With regard to the seventh cycle, it's hard to say. It's, it's going to be based on the state's projection, population projection, so it would depend on a number of factors. But if population is anticipated to go up, and the economy is in a good place, I think we can expect to see at least similar types of increases in the next cycle.
So we're, I'd like to pause council questions. So I'd like to pause council questions at this point and open it up for public comment. So if you're here in person, which none of you are, if you're joining us by Zoom, please raise your hand or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. And now would be the time, we'd love to hear from you on the housing element update.
First speaker is Kevin Burke.
Hi there. Good evening. My name's Kevin Burke. I'm a volunteer with East Bay for Everyone. Thanks very much for looking at the housing element tonight. Thanks very much to Mr. Smith and the consultants for responding to our questions and our comments. We submitted three separate comments. I'd encourage the council to take a look. We put a lot of effort into them. We were the group that was mentioned that went parcel by parcel. I guess what I'd say is, I've been watching the process in Southern California, and there are about 150 jurisdictions that do not currently have a certified housing element. And the consequences of that are, you basically are not eligible for state grants for affordable housing. You're not eligible for state grants for transit. There's also a rule called the builder's remedy, which would allow a property owner to propose basically unlimited density at any parcel in the city. And there's a project in Redondo Beach that's trying to take advantage of this right now. So, so there are pretty severe consequences from not meeting your housing element targets. The number one comment for declined cities is about the feasibility of sites and the number of sites. I guess I'll just say I'm less confident than Mr. Smith and the consultants that the site inventory is, is up to snuff. I, I think there should be more buffer in the site inventory. I also think there are a number of sites that the parcel owner said, told us that they're not interested in building housing. And as a result, it should be removed. Please look at our letter. We, we explain this in more detail. In terms of the mayor pro tem's comments about housing affordability, I would encourage you to commit to reductions in parking minimums in particular. Walnut Creek has really high mandatory minimum parking requirements. Each parking space costs $50,000 to $90,000 to build. So you're basically tacking that onto the cost of every single apartment that you build. So that's one way to lower the price of new housing by 10, 15, 20%. Really instantly by just lowering the amount of parking that needs to get built. Also, in terms of affordability, I note it's legal to build a 4,000-foot single-family home everywhere in Walnut Creek. But it's not legal to build four 1,000-square-foot homes. And I think that would really help affordability too, and also spreading out your housing throughout the, the city instead of just concentrating it downtown. Sorry for going over the time limit and thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Jan Warren.
My apologies. My system has been slow all day. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. Jan Warren, I live in the Woodlands, Walnut Creek. Appreciate the executive summary that makes it easier to read and analyze the data. You submitted the city draft housing element September the 2nd. And you've continued to receive additional comments. Are you holding those comments until the final plan? I understand that the person assigned to our city element is that they, you know, talk back and forth to clarify and ask questions during the 90 days. And so I just was curious. Everybody's worked like Kevin just mentioned. I hope it's not for naught. I would like to know if we could request the seven days that are gonna be coming up for the next comment period after you get the, the draft back from the, the state. Seven days is tough. I, you know, I saw the notice for this. I got the, on Thursday, I got the, you know, the attachments I could look at. And I only got through chapter seven and the public comments. And so would appreciate more time. Do you plan on actually implementing some of the suggestions made by the affordable and market-rate housing folks? They also gave good comments. And I'd like to actually some of, be, some of them implemented because they will allow us to build more affordable housing. Where my other question go, I'd also like to comment briefly. When we make public comments, we give our name. And when we send in something by email, our, our name gets redacted. And unless we're with the organization, and I don't find that to be necessary, and actually it's not very helpful to me. So, thank you.
And mayor, there are no additional hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and, let's see, if there are any other questions? Big picture questions?
There were some process questions that maybe we could get those clarified before we go into the content-specific comments that we might have. So Jan Warren had some process questions. Are we, are we, I'm not holding any comments. I'm thinking she was talking about you, Andy. Are we holding comments that we, have we continued to receive comments since we finished the document in August and sent it to HCD?
Yes, we have, and we'll respond to those in the next draft.
Okay. And there was a question about, is there a plan to implement some of the suggestions that may have been come in through the comments? Same answer?
Yes, and actually we have identified in, I think it's appendix A of where we, where all those comments are included. And where we've summarized the comments and where we're actually, and it specified where we have proposed a, a policy or where there's already something that addresses the issue that's been raised. And that's all in that appendix.
And then the last process question is, when we come back in the spring, is there a comment period for the public to have? And then it, and it, it sounds like an environmental review process again. But what is the process for receiving public comment, or is it only at the planning commission meeting and city council?
Officially, under the state law, there's a minimum of a seven-day public comment period. But then, of course, we would also take input at the commission council meetings, certainly.
Good, good clarification. So can you put that, that bullet back up or the slide back up, that the feedback you're seeking from us?
Oh, yes. Ask Hita to reshare the, oops, or to reshare the screen or, if that is not working, I can bring up the local copy of the slideshow.
I, I heard from Jan that she wanted more than seven days to make public comment. Is that, did I misunderstand?
I think that was the comment. I was asking for clarification as to what the process is. And so there is a seven, a minimum seven-day comment period.
Yes.
I could liken it to an environmental review comment period, which is 45 typically?
Sometimes, yes.
But, so I think that's a question of, we are allowed to expand it if we want it to.
Yes, just keeping in mind the deadlines for resubmit to the state, but yes, certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, the questions for discussion are whether any of the existing policies need to be modified. And does the council wish to consider additional measures to encourage housing? And if so, do you want to put them in the housing element update? We're outside that document, so we have flexibility. And any other comments or feedback we'd like to provide to staff?
I'm gonna answer the last question first, which is, I, I think we, we should keep as much flexibility within our power as we possibly can. So therefore, the council does not want to include the comments in the HEU. And we want to keep the flexibility on the outside.
Yes, Councilmember Darling.
And I would concur with Councilmember Haskell on that. We're seeing a lot of changes in state law. We're seeing a lot of changes in what affordable housing developers have dreamed up with microhomes and things like that. I would support keeping additional policies, something that we, we commit to do. But if we don't need them in our housing element, we give ourselves flexibility.
I would agree with that as well.
So I'd like to give a little different spin on it. I can agree with that. I mean, flexibility, I think, is important because the times do change. I mean, look what would have happened if we had never had, look what happens when you have a pandemic. You need to be able to adapt. But I also think we have to be focused on less generic and a few more specific goals that we can actually determine and that we achieve the objective. Because what we're not being required to do, we're being required to plan, allow for the, to plan for the sites and the RENA numbers. We're not being required to build them and ensure they're, yet. I'm not holding my breath on that one. But to make, in order to get to these goals, more affordable housing, we're gonna have to have some targets of specific things we want to get done that we think will in fact help us achieve it. Our council predecessors 20 years ago established both an inclusionary housing fee program, in-lu fee program, as well as a commercial linkage fee program. It was a huge step forward. And we have been able to capitalize on that. I'm curious, I'm gonna beam this up to 35,000 feet. What are other cities doing that we should be thinking about doing? And one of the speakers, Mr. Burke, mentioned rightsizing the parking, which we are doing the study. And I would really like to ask, when will that study be ready? Because, you know, we've been working on reduction in parking standards for 15 years. What's the status on the study? Hate to put the little pressure on here.
Oh, no worries. So we just literally, council just approved the funding for the contract in, in recent months. And so we have gone through and we've sought a consultant. And they're doing a site evaluation. And we'll actually be coming to council, I believe, to expand it just a little bit for some additional sites. But I'm anticipating by the beginning of next year that we'll have some, you know, initial analysis and some recommendations.
So we're good, that's really important, is that we're going to make progress there. What can we do and, and more examples of that? So I know I wandered a little bit on that, sorry.
I am in agreement with my colleagues about keeping, preserving as much flexibl, flexibility as we can. And, you know, just in terms of, so we're answering these questions first. I think the policies essentially are fine. I cannot, you know, identify any others. Done a very thorough job on identifying the policies. I have additional feedback, but I'll provide that separately. And so I can't think of any additional measures. And.
If we have comments on any of the specific ones, which they go on for page and page and page, we should provide, did you want to go up to the first bullet?
Yeah. Let's see, if they're, not, not typo-type ones, but.
No.
Yeah, we'll do that by email.
And we'll discuss the colors on the line charts. There are two blues and one green. How about an orange?
That's actually something that, yes, has been identified and we're gonna be following up on that.
Thank you. So there have been references throughout this that public education is really, really important. And in 2017, we had a, a robust public outreach program. And I think public education needs to continue in these policies. And I would suggest to my colleagues and to staff that making the city manager's office co-responsible for that, because that's where a good chunk of our public education and outreach resides, with our nutshell newsletter, our television station, our social media. And I think that might help. My other policy-based question really has to do with faith-based, assisting the faith-based organizations with affordable housing development. And we talked about it in the housing committee, that this seems, I think there's a better way to phrase this where we will get further faster. We're allowing a pile, we're exploring one now. Once we get through that process, I don't think compiling an, an interest list is aggressive enough. I think we can compile our own list and invite those to the table as opposed to one-off. If we do this one at a time, this will be a very slow process. If there is, if the pilot, the first one works, there, there must be a way to phrase this so that we take the impetus on initiating the conversation more than just, would you be interested? Maybe it could be like a site list. I, you know, we, where they have to take themselves off the list as opposed to put themselves on the list or something. Because I think there's an opportunity there.
Okay. So like a, have a, it be opt-out rather than opt-in?
That's a little bit like our site survey was. Because maybe there is a way, if it's a, if it's a viable tool, maybe there is a way to do it after the first one, to do it more through a zoning change that allows for it if it is sought. As opposed to, would you like to do this? Well, this is what it is. I mean, and I'm sure I will get cards, letters, and nasty grams for that, but I, I think it's important.
Any other feedback on the first two bullets?
This is on the second bullet, and it has to do with, do we wish to consider additional measures to encourage housing? And I think what I would be most interested in is looking for things that further multiple council goals. Your housing together with sustainability, forwarding some of those policies. And I do know that facilitating the permitting process is important, not only for housing, but it's also important for our business development goal. So those are the two examples of places where I would want to see policies that do double duty, get some emphasis.
Other feedback from colleagues? I, I would add that one thing that struck me was the, the statement that the construction costs in the Bay Area seem to be a factor of four higher than the rest of the state. And there's not, that might not be anything in our control, but it just, it's not anything in our control to some extent. But I was curious about the disconnect there. So maybe in the next iteration, there can be a little more explanation for that, the cause. And I'd like, one thing that is in our control is the impact fees. And it's, from what I gathered from the document, it's over $100,000 in fees for a single-family unit and $36,000 in fees for a multifamily. So just making sure that we're not out of line with what other agencies in our area are charging for, for those various different categories. I agreed with the comment about the parking minimums, and I would like to see that come to council, go through the planning commission and come to council sooner rather than later. And.
Could I ask you a question? This is one where, do we want to provide our thoughts early, earlier than waiting for the planning commission? As a, from a policy perspective, because this is a big policy, the planning commission doesn't set policy. They act on our policy guidance. And we have done that in other cases.
I think on parking minimums, it, I mean, I sort of, not sure quite, I mean, we need, ultimately, they need to make a recommendation to us on it, right? But you're saying for us to have a, a larger, bigger picture policy overview.
Maybe we, or maybe we have a joint meeting with them so they, they, they get our perspective. Because this can be, it, it's a big issue. And it will make a big difference. And maybe we need to be at the tables together to have. And maybe we need to be at the table together to have that conversation initially.
I'm in favor of a joint meeting. Let's see, what else do I have? I'll let you all speak about your, whether you're not in favor. The timeline for the entitlements, I think, I know it's not necessarily tied to a policy. Maybe it should be. Maybe we don't want to box ourselves in. But that is certainly something that I continue to hear about from the development community, not just on residential development, but on non-residential development particularly. I think the Housing Accountability Act has, to some extent, addressed it, maybe not completely, for residential by limiting the number of meetings that can occur. But to the extent we can think of other creative ways to streamline the process, I think that would be, that would be good. So those were my comments. Any other comments that are beyond what we've discussed so far?
Well, I'll just chime in on the discussion for a joint meeting with the, with the planning commission, since we've already touched on it. And I'm actually not in favor of that. And the reason is because I feel like we're putting our thumb on the scale then. We have the planning commission to review things, to make recommendations, and we can either accept them or not. And that's what we do at city council. But I think that if we have a joint meeting with them, it feels like we're putting our thumb on the, on the scale. And then that is going to influence certain planning commissioners potentially in not being as candid as they normally would be about what their feelings are. And so unless something that is being presented to us when we have joint meetings, which I completely support in this particular instance, I would prefer to go through its normal process.
I'd just say on that, and I appreciate the comment. What I know, we did, we did a joint meeting on impact fees. I remember that. And I didn't feel inhibited, I was on the planning commission at that time, in making my comments known. And I, I think most of our planning commissioners, I have confidence that they would not kind of feel intimidated or shy about. To me, it was helpful that we had that joint meeting on impact fees, and I view these parking standards as falling in that same kind of realm.
And we've had them on affordable housing and housing laws. And we've also had them before the major project for Broadway Plaza started. We came together so that we could hear and just get multiple perspectives at, at the get-go as a means of helping the process go more smoothly.
And I think it's also helpful to the developers as well. I mean, because that gives them, that saves time, and they can tell the trend. And so I think that makes it more attractive to the people that are going to actually do the work.
Any further thoughts, Councilmember Darling?
It's just going to be so much fun. I can't wait.
I'm detecting a little bit of sarcasm in that comment. Okay. Let's see, do you have the information and feedback you're seeking from us? Is there anything further that you need?
No, I think that's quite helpful.
And when should we expect to see this again then, before the council?
We haven't scheduled an exact date yet, but we are, I will say, early winter, so, you know, early next year. Trying to remember if we were looking at late January or into February. I actually don't have my timeline in front of me, but perhaps Orlando might
I guess I would just, I would
Remember better than I am.
Want us to strive certainly to provide far more than seven days notice on a document of this size for public comment, and certainly to provide it in a redlined version so that folks can just focus on the changes. And we just emphasize that this would have to go through planning commission and council separately, so there would be that whole time period to make comment.
Yeah, yes.
And HCD as well? Our HCD? Council HCD.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I mean, as long as we can fit it within the, again, the timelines established by the state for getting, you know, certification of the housing element, we're more than happy to do that.
Can I ask a question about, a process question? So HCD sends it back to us. You're going to dig through all those comments. Do you start making changes? Or do you, or do you bring it to us so we can understand what HCD said in case you need additional policy direction?
I think that it would depend on really the nature of the comments.
What they say.
Yeah. I mean, the initial plan is to, to respond to the comments in an updated final draft document that we then would take to the commission and council.
Yeah, I would, I would want to echo that. If we could have some latitude, see what type of feedback we get. If it's mostly cleanup and there's nothing significant, I would suggest it probably doesn't warrant additional.
Keep it moving forward. If it's significant and they have rejected half of our sites,
Yeah, then we'd have a big problem.
Then we might have to have a conversation.
We'd be having a lot of conversations.
Do we, do we have any kind of, I'm asking, I guess, Hita, do we have any kind of sense about how HCD state is going to, what their comments are from the Southern California experience?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. We do. We had experience in the Southern California region. We were able to get those housing elements certified. And so we've actually prepared your housing element, you know, utilizing what we learned from Southern California. So certain aspects of the site inventory, of the fair housing analysis, of the constraints analysis have been incorporated. So everything we know to date is, has been incorporated into your housing element. They will focus on sites, on constraints, and on fair housing, that they affirmatively further in fair housing, and your goals and policies. In our experience, those have been the focus sections for the state. That said, there are different reviewers at state HCD. So everybody's got, you know, a different interpretation sometimes. So it would depend, you know, we're really hoping that we will have one of the two reviewers that we've had in the past on Walnut Creek as well, because there's a relationship there and there's kind of an understanding. But we do have a, a plan on, you know, how to, when we receive the findings letter, they call it a findings letter, we always recommend to schedule a call immediately with HCD, or even if we know it's coming, so that we can review what they've said in the findings letter and really understand what it is that they're looking for. Having that information even to bring back to council or planning commission would be important because sometimes they'll just say that something in their view doesn't meet